Call the September 18th special meeting of the Milltown Planning Board to order. Secretary, please read the Open Public Meeting Act.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, specifying the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy to the official newspaper of the borough, and by filing a copy in the office of the borough clerk.
Secretary, please read the public convening, please roll call.
Mr. Carrasso.
Aye.
Mr.?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mayor Murray?
Present.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
Mr. Reba?
Here.
Mr. Ruth? Mr. Shakarjan? Mr. Darren Murray? Mr. McNamara? Ms. Earl?
Here.
Okay. Everybody rise and salute the flag, please.
[inaudible]
Next is our master plan consistency review. This is amended Ford Avenue redevelopment plan. The Borough has introduced an ordinance to amend the Milltown Ford Avenue redevelopment plan. One of the responsibilities of the planning board is to review the proposed amended plan for consistency with the master plan. Board does not vote on approval of the redevelopment plan. That is the responsibility of the council. Planning Board's jurisdiction is only to review the plan for consistency with the master plan. I'd like to turn this over to the planner. You know what? I do have one, just housekeeping real quick for the board here. You do have a memo from MJ Planning. This is from the town council planner. Okay? Let's turn this over to Mr. Barry.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Here on behalf of the Borough and the council to give you a brief overview of the changes to the Ford Avenue redevelopment plan, talk a little bit about the consistency with the master plan, and then I know you have Mr. Reinertson here from CME as well to chime in on behalf of the board, so I'll kick it over to him when I'm through. So we, everybody has some familiarity, of course, with the Ford Avenue property and redevelopment area. This is a never-ending saga of litigation and back and forth and so forth that's been going on for many years. The most recent amendment to the Ford Avenue plan was adopted in 2022. At that time, we did a similar review before the planning board and discussed the consistency of that plan with the Borough's master plan and planning documents. Subsequent to that adoption, there was a challenge filed. Ultimately, through the Superior Court Law Division and through the appellate division, that adoption of the plan was upheld. We did what we were supposed to do, and everything was done appropriately with that adoption at that time. So the current amendment to the redevelopment plan comes from the ongoing condemnation process that has been underway for about six years now, and as a result of the valuation, the most recent valuation that was entered for the property, for the redevelopment agency to take the property, it was determined that some changes, some amendments to the redevelopment plan would be necessary in order to continue with a redevelopment project and move that forward. So that's what we're here this evening to discuss. The plan dated September 4th was introduced by the mayor and council. This was last week. And the high point changes really are to adjust the total number of units that would be permitted. The most recent version of the plan, the 2022 one, permitted thirty, sorry, 300 residential units, and the current version proposes going back to the 350 units that had been part of the prior plans predating the 2022 amendment. So increasing the number of units back to 350, which historically for many years had been the number of units proposed for the site and was even the number that was approved by a site plan approval at this board some years ago. With those 350 units, 35 of them are proposed to be affordable. This is something we discussed back in June when the fourth round housing element and fair share for the Borough was adopted by this board. This was part of that plan to amend the number of affordable units. Previously, it had been 70 units. Through some look at the viability of the project and discussions with the designated redeveloper, it's determined that in order to move things forward, 10% set aside with the 35 units would be feasible. And in looking through the housing element and fair share plan and working through the various numbers, then different sites throughout the Borough, it was determined that that would still be acceptable for the Borough to meet its obligations and to continue to be in compliance. So the housing element and fair share plan outlined this change, and this proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan is putting it into place. Some of the other changes include, prior versions of the plan had permitted townhouses and apartment flats, two different housing types. The most recent 2022 version envisioned all apartment units, and now we're back to a mix of townhome style and apartments and also a stacked townhouse. So there's three different definitions included in the plan. For those of you who may not be familiar with stacked townhouses, they come in a couple different styles, but sometimes you have two floors above two floors, so you'd have one unit on the lower two floors, one unit on the upper two floors in a four-story model. There's also versions of this that are more like interlocking pieces that have kind of one and a half, one and a half in a three-story model. So there's a couple different versions of that that's possible. They tend to be a little more flexible with, especially with affordable housing. So the plan permits a mix of townhouses, stacked townhouses, and apartment units. The plan also slightly modifies some of the permitted building heights. The previous 2022 version had allowed, permitted five stories for apartments and mixed-use buildings, the maximum of 60 feet. We bumped that up to 65 feet in this version of the plan just to give slightly more flexibility to, and also to ensure that if there is a mixed-use building, we have a good height for a ground floor commercial space that typically require a little more height than a residential floor, so you'd have a, you'd often see a taller ground floor and then shorter floors on the upper floors. The heights permitted for the townhouses are three and a half stories and 45 feet, and the stacked townhouses, four stories and 50 feet. Again, that gives the flexibility for different models that, as the design gets flushed out. The parking overall, the previous version of the plan, the 2022, had been focused just on apartment units, so there was parking ratios based on the different number of bedrooms per apartment. Now we've got parking ratios based on the different types of units. So for the apartments in a mid-rise flat style building, require 1.25 spaces per unit. For the stacked townhouses, one and a half spaces per unit, which most likely would come in form of a garage and driveway. Good? Yeah, looks like it's, you picking it up okay? Okay. So 1.25 spaces for the apartment flats, 1.5 spaces for the stacked townhouses, and then two spaces per unit for the more traditional standard townhouse models. And then we've got the same commercial parking ratio that's three spaces per 1,000 square feet of floor area. The other, kind of one of the, is the last change now? Another significant change is the setback requirements. There's a slight reduction in the setbacks for the mid-rise building. Previously, that had been 50 feet to neighboring properties. We've reduced that to 25 feet. That gives some flexibility and also setback in Mill Pond. We reduced from 100 feet to 50 feet, and that also comes with a discussion about open space. The 2022 plan had called for 100-foot buffer walkway area along the pond, plus some additional open space. It had required, I believe, eight acres at that time. Considering the different economic factors at play and the uncertainty about whether other entities will be able to contribute to acquire open space, the open space requirements in the plan now are a little more amorphous. The 50-foot walkway along Mill Pond is still a requirement, that publicly accessible walkway that's been a part of the plan for many years since its inception essentially. And that's consistent with the county's longer-term greenway vision, the Lawrence Brook Greenway, that area that will provide part of a broader connection. But as to the rest of the open space that may or may not be provided on site, the plan leaves it open-ended. There's a hope that, and reflected on the concept plan that's attached, that there be an area of passive open space likely toward the west, southwest side of the property, the back of the property, if you will, away from Main Street. So those are the high-level plans. There's a few other small tweaks here and there, and a little bit of cleanup work and some updates based on the history and so forth, what's transpired. But those are the big-picture changes of note. And then in the memorandum I prepared for the board, I just gave a run-through on the board's obligations to review the plan in the context of the local redevelopment and housing law, that there are several sections that talk about the board's role here, reviewing the plan for consistency with the master plan to determine if it's substantially consistent and designed to effectuate the master plan, and then also that the board has an opportunity to provide other comments to the mayor and councils should they see fit to do so. The master plan, most recent document that was adopted was the 2025 Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, as I mentioned, and this plan amendment is directly in line with what's called for in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. I mean, it's directly connected. It's designed to effectuate that plan exactly as it was written with the amendment to the Ford Avenue site and the obligation of affordable units associated with it. And then we've got the history of how the 2022 plan was adopted, and broadly speaking, things have stayed the same with this plan in terms of its big picture, its goals, objectives, and its relationship to the previous planning documents. The 2019 Master Plan Reexamination Report talks about making sure that vacant and abandoned parcels of land are fully utilized and developed with ratables and public amenities, future plans that provide for parks and open space within the borough, making sure that the Borough's housing obligation is satisfied, and then ensuring that future land use decisions consider environmental impacts, including local flooding events and broader impacts through a lens of sustainability and resiliency. And in 2019, at that time, there was specific discussion of the site, of the redevelopment plan, and the, there were no further changes recommended at that time, but there's a key line, I think, that the Borough and redevelopment agencies should continue to work with the designated redeveloper to ensure that the redevelopment project is successfully completed. And where further down the line, lots transpired over the last six years, but that statement certainly rings true and remains valid for what we're doing today. The 2019 Utility Services Plan Element and Circulation Plan Element, both, Utility Services Plan Element doesn't have anything particularly tied to this plan. There were updates to the off-track improvement ordinance, the Borough's off-track improvement ordinance that came out of the adoption of that plan, but that's now five, six years ago. And the circulation plan element does include language about improvements to the Ford Avenue, Ford Avenue corridor, Ford Avenue and Main Street intersection that would tie directly into this project, and as the, you know, future engineering designs are flushed out, those proposals may be incorporated or modified as needed. And then lastly, the most recent land use element prior to the 2019 reexamination report was the 2009 Master Plan Land Use Element. Goal 1D talks about following through on the Borough's commitment to redevelop the Ford Avenue redevelopment area. So here we are, still working on that 16 years later. Then continuing to provide for open space and recreation opportunities and promote a sense of place and improve neighborhood aesthetics, which we're working on with the dedication of the walkway along the pond and hopefully contribute, enhancement of the Main Street corridor with a mixed-use design. And then the land use plan talks about updating the zoning map to reflect the Ford Avenue redevelopment plan, to provide a mix of residential, commercial, and public uses for the block south of Ford Avenue, obviously consistent with the redevelopment plan that was in place at that time and has continued to evolve and would still be in place today. So I think with that, I've said my piece. I'd be happy to take any questions. Kick it over to Mr. Reinertson and go from there.
Real quick, I just want to clarify that our planning board planner is Ronald Reinertson here tonight for us as well. Board, questions on consistency?
I have a question, a few. Just trying to get a better understanding of the difference between this plan, 2022 plan, and I know that all the reference to 2009. From what I recall, in 2022, one of the changes had to do with the change in the material type, which were, or the definition of primary building materials, which did not include things like metal and fiber siding. I double-checked, seemed like that had not changed. So is there anything else that maybe goes back to the 2009 plan, other than the additional units that might stand out to you that's significant?
So the, prior to 2022, we had a 2019 version, and we had a 2012 version. I think the most substantial change was, or prior to the 22 version, was the 2012 one. But as far as the materials go, no, the definitions of the different primary, secondary materials have not changed in this version. Things I highlighted are really the key changes as far as, the unit number is actually back to where we had been in 2012 with the 350, and as well as the mix of some apartment flats and townhouse units, so the combination of, or the different types of housing. So in that way, it's reverting back to where it had been before. Some of the other things I talked through are the main changes since 2022. I don't know if there's anything else that jumps out at me that was, wasn't a whole lot of other alterations.
Yeah, I think, just to clarify, and I think you kind of already answered it, maybe, was in 2022, I recall there being the difference between a mixed-use development versus a development that was a mix of uses or a collection of various parcels. And specifically, it was on the corner. I remember that was going to be labeled as a pad site in the concept plan. Am I understanding it correctly that the, this is more of a mixed-use plan? Is that, would that be the right terminology as opposed of a mix of uses?
So I think what you see on the concept plan that's attached is you've got a true mixed-use design at the Main Street frontage, at the corner of Main Street and Ford Avenue, where you've got likely one building that has multiple uses within it and sharing access and creating that connection to Main Street. And then you've got the residential development kind of behind it. So the answer to your questions, maybe it's both. I mean, it is, it is kind of, there is more of a directly mixed-use concept incorporated here, but there is still a mix of uses present on the site.
Right, yeah, because I think the way I interpreted the 2022 version is that mixed use was, that was prohibited. There wasn't anything that was mixed use. Everything was very separate. This particular section of the property would be used only for commercial, and then over here would be strictly residential, and then in the back was open space. And I feel like this is definitely more blended.
Yeah, because I think the 2022 version, the concept at that time, like you're saying, the commercial was sort of off on its own, and then we had chunk of residential, and then we had chunk of open space. So there is a little more of an integration of uses of this version.
Thanks.
Two quick questions. So a lot of the changes have been based upon the jury award that came in a few months ago and the ability to redevelop the site and still make it so that it was consistent with the plan, but also viable economically for the developer, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a fair way to frame things.
And the open space has shrunk since the last one in light of that?
Yeah, so the 2022 plan, there, prior to that, there had been an agreement, at which point there was the intent that the county, Middlesex County, would be involved to acquire a specific section of open space. That's up in the air at this point, so we don't want to tie this redevelopment plan at the local level to outside entities and their decision-making. We've got a provision to encourage some open space. We just don't have it quantified in quite the same way. See, the concept plan does include an area, the one area that we're explicit about is that walkway along the pond, but the intention is for there to be some area of open space. They're certainly shown on the concept, but we don't have it quantified in the same way because of those uncertainties.
One last question, too. You referenced the fact that this board came a couple months ago to approve our long-term affordable housing commitment, and in this plan, we're reducing the number in half from 70 to 35. Can you just give us another explanation as to how that's still consistent with our long-term obligations relative to not only this, but future and additional projects?
Sure. So with the housing element, when we prepared that, talked about it, adopted it, the way that we were able to do that was by identifying other sites in town, either projects that are, have been approved, in the case of the Erisa project at the Acme site, there's a certain number of affordable units as part of that project when it moves forward, and then some other parts of town that have been either zoned for affordable housing or, in the case of the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan, have sites that have been earmarked for inclusionary development that has a mix of market rate and affordable housing units. So when we went through and did all the math, and, you know, this is always sort of a math exercise at the end of the day with these affordable housing obligations, because we need to fit these different numbers into the different rounds that have transpired over the years, but once we worked through all of that, we saw that even by cutting this down from 70 to 35 units, the Borough would still be able to generate enough affordable units through these other sites, through these other zoning opportunities throughout the Borough to satisfy its obligation. So while with the 70 units, we probably have some surplus credits. With the 35 units, based on the adopted plan from June and the intention to follow through with that, I think we're still in good shape to meet the obligation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a comment to add to that, just an affordable housing overlay zone that I remember. Like, that's what you're saying, that we did do a few properties like that, like the end of Van Leeuve Avenue where that Riley Services is, like that, that building, I think is an overlay zone for affordable housing. So I do remember approving some overlay zones for affordable housing for future developments.
Yep.
My question is, so these amendments, the purpose of this is for us to be able to condemn the property with these changes, right?
Well, redevelopment agency hopes to move forward with the condemnation, and the goal would be that putting, having this plan adopted would set the stage for a development that will allow that to happen.
So it pretty much gives us a shot. This would give us a much better shot. It's not something that's guaranteed, and we think that a combination of all of these changes is necessary. We shouldn't really look into pulling one back. It's really, these few changes are the way to go.
Yeah, I would say that these changes are important to be able to move things forward. I don't want to say anything is guaranteed when it comes to Ford Avenue, you know? So, but as far as trying to make this work, this is the plan that we believe is best shot.
Cool, thanks, understood.
Anyone else?
Just want some confirmation from Hugh John. This planning change is going to trigger some pre-substantive changes in the proposal from the developer for layout and all that stuff. We're still going to see, that's going to cause a new proposal? That would trigger a new proposal as opposed to a change order from the original proposal that was approved?
As far as a-
When it came before the board the last time?
Oh, yeah. Anything that would be, that would move forward based on this would have to come back to the board for site plan approval, starting with a fresh application.
Yeah, scratch from scratch.
Yeah, we'd be vetting it from scratch based on these standards, the current stormwater standards and so forth, the other, you know, other engineering requirements that go along with it.
All right. That's it.
Anyone else? Last call. I'll, need a motion to accept?
Just so we're clear, what you're voting on is if this is consistent with the master plan. You're not approving the new amended plan. That's for a council to do. You guys are voting, yes, it's consistent, no, it's not consistent with the master plan. That's all we're doing here.
I'd like to make a motion that the-
Wait.
Proposal.
Hold on.
I think I have to-
Yeah, we have to hear from our board planner.
Is this on?
Yes.
Yes. You gotta really talk into it.
Feel free.
Okay. All right, so Ron Reinertson here on behalf of the board. I've had the opportunity to examine all the master plan documentation, Mr. Barry's memo. I'll just, so it doesn't get buried in the lead, I do concur with his conclusions. It is still consistent with the master plan. In essence, what has happened here is that nothing, nothing in this plan has changed except the affordable housing units, and I think we've had testimony to that, that's basically the change. And that's consistent with your housing element, which has the same numbers, which ties out. So Mr. Barry kind of points out, things change, and one of them, interestingly enough, is, you know, we use the word effectuate of the master plan. How do we effectuate the master plan? Well, the numbers that were done in the settlement, I think Mr. Barry laid out, were a roadblock to effect, to moving this project forward, so things had to change. And I think that he went back, and I think his memo states it, and I just want to go on the record. In the master, in the redevelopment plan on page four, Mr. Barry goes in on the master planning, this is a long time going, the 2002 Master Plan Reexamen recommended that the redevelopment plan for this area include affordable housing. This has continued on to the present day. So in the big picture, in the big umbrella, it is still consistent with the master plan. So I just wanted to go on record for you, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Ron. We're back to a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the revised plan as proposed.
Second.
We're motioning to make, to say that it is consistent with the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'll still second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrasso?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Mertens?
Aye.
Chair LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Reba?
Aye.
Mr. Ruth?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have the open to the public. The common portion of our meeting is allowed, allows the public to bring the planning board attention, their concerns and comments. Please state your name, address for the record when you come to the podium. Please speak loudly. You have five minutes.
Charlie Miller, 92 Ford Avenue. So this is just basically for clarity, but I have a few questions. I don't know if I can do it all in five minutes, but I'll do the best I can. When the remediation begins, will there be adequate and professional water suppression in place to keep the dust at a minimum? Because unlike when we first did demolition, they were doing it with a garden hose.
So we have standards for that.
Second is, there are numerous contaminants in the ground and footings throughout the site. When cleanup begins and the water is used to hold down the airborne dust, will they use containment systems to keep the water from going down the drains and sewers and going into the pond, possibly bringing the contaminants with it?
Engineering, I'm sure we're going to be following all the EPA standards.
Developer will need to get what's called a demolition permit. The demolition permit, I'm not sure this is on there, John.
It's Mig.
The demolition permit requires the items that the home board's asking.
Please let us know, you're right there.
Okay. Yeah, oh, yeah, it's right behind my house, so. It's been well over 100 years on the site, and there are many different sources of contaminated materials such as benzene, mercury, dioxin, varzal, xylene, lead, and more recently in the past 10 years, PCB from the spill during the demolition, also byproducts from coal piles and many other storage materials over the years. My fear is that they're going to have to go- My fear is that they're going to have to go very deep into the ground to remove all this contamination. So with that said, if they have to remove it, large amounts of soil, will they be lowering and changing the topography of the land, possibly making Ford Avenue a flood plain? So my question was, will they fill it back in and raise it back to the current level above the pond to ensure that Ford Ford Avenue does not flood out?
If I if I can just jump in there, I mean, this this we're these guys can only vote on the consistency with the master plan. Those are probably questions better for the council and the council meeting when they're voting on that.
Because I was told on the other day.
To come here and do it.
Before then.
Okay. I don't I just don't know if they're gonna be able, yeah. No, 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 I'm not asking you something, I'm just saying I don't know that how much they're going to be able to answer, because they the plan's more for council.
All right, I'll hold the rest of the questions.
Let me just take a stab at it. There was a detailed site plan in the earlier versions, and I'd expect that to be submitted in the new version. And at that time, the drainage and the flood plain and and the contamination issues were all will all be reviewed again. The old, the earlier resolution required an LSRP, which is Licensed Site Remediation Professional, to be involved in all the cleanup and all the work that's to be done. So that's a DEP authorized the engineer to basically monitor that. And any materials that be taken off-site would be measured and tested and taken up before before that's done. So it will be done in accordance with the current standards.
Okay. That's including all core sampling and everything?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. All right, I'll hold off the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Debbie Miller, 92 Ford Avenue. I know that you you mentioned that there's not going to be much change, but when you live on Ford Avenue and you extend the buildings behind our houses, that's a lot of change for us. Also, before the 22, there was a question on emergency vehicles getting to the buildings in the back and how they would get out. Is I guess that will be taken into consideration?
As I said earlier, there'll be an entire site plan submitted to the borough, and with those applications will be the need to prove access for emergency vehicles, as it was with the earlier one. So the change will be required to to show that.
Then the other question, I know you mentioned something about utilities, but is there any obligation for the builder or the developer to support what's going to be needed for these houses?
So the the borough has an ordinance, it's called an off-tract improvement ordinance. Basically, it takes into account the impact associated with a large project, and if there's improvements that may be needed elsewhere, a portion of those, a portion of that cost could be borne by the developer of of a significant project. It's basically a formula that in the ordinance, it lays out the the math that you would go through to understand that. And the borough engineer's office would be responsible ultimately for working through that, but short answer, I guess, is yes, there could be some some costs associated with it.
So you mean the lines that bring the water in from New Brunswick that start at the substation, if that can't handle?
I I don't know about the specifics. That may be a better question for the engineer, just as a general rule, that ordinance is on the books.
Okay.
Again, the application we submit it to the borough, the calculation needed fire for will be provided, and there'll be testing required to make sure that that's available from the system. Right now, we have a pretty good pressure and flow coming down Main Street. So the earlier plan included a loop from Main Street back into Brook Drive, so that's probably going to be required, but that was an analysis that was done earlier with the earlier plan. There'll be a new one required for the new plan.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Next, please. If there's no more questions, we'll close the public portion.
I have a question.
Please, come on up. Sorry, I missed you.
Rosa Taveras, 100 Riva Avenue. So I've heard about the parking spaces per units for the different types of units. I wonder what kind of consideration has been made in terms of the additional traffic into town and also the impact on schools? These are rental units, right, not for purchase units?
Most likely rental units. The plan, I don't believe, requires particular tenancy. I think the townhouses are probably before sale, the apartments for rent, probably a mix.
Oh, so that hasn't been determined?
It's it's not spelled out in the plan what's required, but it would depend on.
But so in terms of income to the borough, people who own a townhouse are paying taxes, people who are renters are not paying taxes, and that's my question about.
Every every residential building pays taxes. The renters pay taxes as part of their rent. The landlord's paying taxes, somebody's paying taxes.
Okay, so has there has has that been looked at, the impact to additional children into like, an incredible amount of new families coming into these units, potentially with children? What impact does that have on the schools being able to accommodate the additional children?
The the plan that's proposed here, this redevelopment plan, has called for this number of units for at least 15 years, if not longer. So something that the borough's been anticipating for quite a long time. It's been just part of the part of the fabric of what may come. And as far as housing goes and affordable housing goes, it's really, and certainly not this board's job, to consider the impacts of schoolchildren on on the affordable housing development.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more time. Any other questions? Then we'll close the public portion, and no other questions, we'll have an adjournment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And professionals, thank you.